Smithville Board of Alderman Meeting is now called to order. I've asked Dr. Moss, our new superintendent, to lead the pledge today since it is official as of July 1st, so please stand and join him in the pledge. Thank you. Next item on my agenda is the consent agenda. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hartman's online too, right? Okay. Yeah, there's. All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on my agenda is the committee reports. EDC report.
Mayor, I was absent from that. I had a work commitment that evening, so I did not attend the EDC report. I did view it afterwards, but did not attend.
I know you guys had an update from the Mizzou Extension. And if you, if there's Gina can give a little bit too.
All right. Good evening. For EDC, last month, we had two new members, John Wallace and Sonia Kreets. And then we are working towards outlining which comprehensive plan goals the EDC wants to work on, and they've identified focusing on arts in the community. So at the next meeting on Wednesday night, we will have G K Callahan from the MU Extension come here and lead a discussion on how to plan an art project in the community. So look forward to updates for the next meeting.
Thank you. Planning and zoning.
There are four items that we had on planning and zoning that are on tonight's agenda. The first one was a conditional use permit of the transfer station for an inside facility for construction and demolition materials. Another one was a single-phase final plat, first part, third plat. The third was site plan Smithville self-storage. Fourth was site plan Smithville School and Transportation Facility. We also started initial discussion regarding potential ordinance for short-term rentals. Sixth attic storage construction has been completed and is now open. And so far this year, we've had 22 single-family resident permits here today, and three more were just recently issued. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Cynthia, I want to let everybody know that Alderman Wilson and Alderman Russell have been working on two advisory committees for me. They'll be meeting fourth Monday this month. They had an initial meeting. It'll be at the senior center or at the Housing Authority again, right? So the 24th at 10:00 a.m. Two topics are community center and senior citizens. You're welcome to attend. They've got lots of paperwork and plans to look at, so please see them after the meeting if you need more info. Ms. Wagner. Oh, Finance Committee.
Yeah, you have Finance Committee? All right.
It's all me. All right. We met on July 11th, and we just discussed vendor payments in excess of 7,500 bank reconciliation updates. An update on the outstanding checks list. Proposed utility rate changes and schedule of fees discussed, which was a lot of the topic on the work session tonight, so you can find that information there. Then we discussed compensation and update for fiscal year 2024, which we'll get some on that soon.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to just call to people's attention? There are a number of project updates in the City Administrator's Report that is included online on both some. Jack debuted at the Planning Commission meeting last week. Comprehensive Plan Dashboard to provide updates on progress and meeting those action steps and the work to be completed in that. That's not yet live on the website, but we do hope to have that hopefully in August. And then there is additional both project updates and memos following up from board communication and requests from particularly from the governing body retreat. I do also, Chuck has asked that I have this conversation with the board because we anticipate so long as the board is okay with this, bringing something forward for your review at the August 15th meeting. As we continue to evaluate our equipment throughout the organization, probably our highest priority need has been identified as the John Deere tractor and boom mower in the Streets Department to use primarily for right-of-way mowing. It also does assist in some of the mowing in parks and recreation area. The current unit has really become less and less reliable, has several operational issues, and mechanics at John Deere have tried to determine and identify the problems, but have not had a lot of success. It was acquired by the city in 2005, so it's nearing 20 years old and also has over 8,000 hours of operation. Purchasing a new unit outright would be about $200,000. In looking at the funds that we've identified as available in our capital improvement program, we don't have $200,000 in a year for all of equipment. So we've worked with John Deere and have looked at an option of a five-year lease that would make lease payments about $46,000 a year, which would be more affordable within the budget, would allow us to buy that piece of equipment, and then also maybe look at a smaller piece of equipment. So we would look at that for a five-year lease that would create a total cost of about $230,000, but we'd also have equity at the end, and then to be able to keep that if we so wished. So we have been having conversations about that. We've had indications from John Deere that there's a lead time of about eight months once an order is placed. So what we'd like to do, we anticipate this being included in the budget. We'd like to go ahead and have the board approve the purchase or the initial contract with John Deere at the August 15th meeting so that we can get that on order. No money is due until we take pay, take delivery, so it would not occur until the budget, but we wanted to make sure that you all had that information. We're trying to, it's kind of like what we did with police cars in ordering them. We wanted to get in line to order those, and then we'll pay for them with next year's budget, but we wanted you all to be aware of that. Are there any questions on that? If there are no concerns, we will bring that forward then for you all at the August 15th meeting. And then finally, wanted to let you all know, we had anticipated second reading of TIF-related items this evening. Those will be considered on August 1st. We will have two items on the agenda that evening. We'll meet at 7:00. And then we will meet on August 15th. We'll have a number of budget-related items. And as we discussed earlier this summer, we'll meet on August 28th in a special session for certification of ballot language for a public safety sales tax that needs to be to the county clerk's office on the 29th. With that, I stand for questions, Mayor.
Speaking of the public safety sales tax, I want to thank our former state rep and our current state rep and the governor for all the hard work on that, getting that across the finish line. It was signed last Thursday, correct? So. But we still can't meet until after. It goes into effect. Any other questions for Cynthia? Moving on to number six. Alderman Neilatol.
2998-23 Fairview Crossing CID Funding Agreement, Second Reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Neilatol.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a funding agreement for the Fairview Crossing Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Neilatol.
Motion to approve Bill Number 2999-23 Amending Chapter 640 Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, may I just have a question here on the peddler solicitors and canvassers? When I read through this, it's every person, say for example, a telephone company has several people that are going out and selling whatever they are. Every person has to have and be approved through the city background check, et cetera, every person. And will we could be able to have a copy of what the approval looks like? So if someone were to knock on a residence door, they would know, they would recognize the the, how, I mean, how would we know, I guess is the question.
They typically have a little placard.
Okay, okay. And so that's just get.
Is that required, the placard?
It's not required. Correct. But it would still be a permit, and so they could be asked, and that, but that is required too. So people can ask for that. And maybe what we, in hearing this, maybe we ought to, what we ought to do is include some information on social media of what the process is. If you have people showing up your door, you can ask for their permit. So and then we could show what that would look like. We can provide some information to the public on that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It's my favorite question, ask people to knock on my door, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Neilatol.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Dan, are you there?
Yes, I, I don't know if you heard me or not.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending Chapter 640 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eight. Alderman Neilatol.
Motion to approve Bill Number 3000-23 Conditional Use Permit Transfer Station, First Reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I've got two public comment cards, Kim and David. I'm guessing the applicants. Jack? Pink? Do you guys wish to speak? So Kim, you can go first. And if you, if the board has any questions, these are the applicants for the conditional use permit as well. Just state your name for the record and your address, and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Kim Finkie, 9350 Highway E Camden. Sorry, Kim Finkie, 9350 Highway E Camden Point, Missouri. So thank you, first of all, for letting us speak tonight, and also for considering our conditional use permit request. I'm Kim Finkie. This is my husband, David Finkie. We're owners of Huntley Disposal, a roll-off dumpster company servicing Smithville and the surrounding communities since 1984. In 2016, we purchased the company. We've been very fortunate to experience growth on both the residential and commercial side. And with that growth, we see an opportunity to branch out into the recycling market. So I'll turn it over to David, and he can tell you a little more detail regarding why we're here this evening.
Same address, David Finkie, 9350 Highway E Camden Point, Missouri. Currently on job sites all over the city and, and you know, wherever we're at here, we're seeing a push go to an effort to divert things from the landfills. And that's our, our main purpose. We don't want to be a transfer station, even though this requires us to go through the city. We are not pursuing through the state to actually become a transfer station. So what we're doing is we want to be a recycle center. So job sites like Meta out here, we, we dump four, five dumpsters a day. One of their requirements, like all of these other large job sites, is that each dumpster individually is dumped on the ground inside a building and sorted. And then you provide a report on, on the contents, and then you, their goal is to recycle 95% of that, and that's what we have to do. So that's what we're looking for. Currently, we go to Greenpoint and Topeka. So dumpsters from, from right here, right outside of the city limit, we have to take those all the way to Topeka, which they just do it out on the ground there. But the only thing, the dumpsters that we will bring back to this facility are construction and demolition only. If it's at your home and you have household goods, those dumpsters still go to the, to the landfill and either in St. Joe, or they go to an actual transfer station in the city and then go on to a landfill from there. So what we will be recycling, if this, if we're permitted to do this, is we will do wood, metal, plastic, cardboard, drywall. We will purchase a machine that actually breaks the drywall down to do that. We currently already do concrete. That comes in separate dumpsters, but we need to do that outside, so that wouldn't be permitted at this location. We have another piece of property that, that we do that on, and then they, they turn that into gra, they process it into gravel, and then we reuse it in the city. So that, our thing that we're really wanting to do is to be a recycle center. It keeps our prices down because we don't have to go to the other locations, and it's less we have to pay for at the landfill. Currently, we run about 300 dumpsters and six trucks. Currently, we have, I looked today, we have 72 dumpsters within the Smithville School District, not necessarily in the city limit. But, so I think a lot of those savings will, will be helpful for this community. This company has always been a Smithville company since Gary Huntley started in 1984. And that's what, what we would like to continue is to stay here in us. We're both from small town as well, so we want to stay in that community and grow the business here. Just have the opportunities instead of having to go outside of the area.
Awesome. Thanks for the explanation.
Yes. And I've got one more thing to add. With this growth into the recycling market, it would bring another environmentally friendly, one-known business, and we'd love to base that out of Smithville.
Thank you.
And I think one, one other thing real quick, I know people had some concern about is hazardous, hazardous waste. We don't accept that in our dumpsters. We police that when, when our drivers, they, they look for things like paint, and we charge an obscene amount of money if they put, you know, actual liquid paint in a dumpster. If anything is loose, when we pick the dumpster up with the truck, it's going to run on their driveway from the back of the dumpster because they're not watertight. But in this facility, it would be, the floor would be flat. So if something did spill, we, we carry spill kits in every truck. We wouldn't let it go down. The drain, we would have to squeegee over to the drains, basically. That's how we set these up. That's how other facilities like this are currently. So, but we police it pretty, pretty hard. We don't want to bring any of that because currently we can't take it to the landfills, and we can't take it to the, the actual transfer stations. They don't accept any hazardous waste, and it's all over our contracts and our website. And we've educated our customer base pretty well to know that they cannot do that, so.
Yeah, there's some questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So you mentioned, thank you for coming, by the way.
Thank you.
So you mentioned you squeeze each of the drain if you had like, like something that, that I missed, that's what you said? Right? If you had something that was.
To get it to the drain, you would have to squeegee it. We wouldn't, we would clean the spill up with a spill kit, and then that get, that would go to, like the city of Kansas City has for chemicals to dispose of. So nothing, we wouldn't squeegee anything to the drain to get, I'm just saying, if we dumped a dumpster and something was in there that we didn't find and it spilled on the floor, it's not going to go straight, it's not going to be sloped to the drain, okay? So it's not going to run down before we can, it, it'll give us the opportunity because there would be just four bays, so you know, where you dump in, you back in, dump the dumpster, and you would have to push that over to the drain, but we would throw something, you know, to dry it up, just like, you know, on a larger scale. But say if you spill oil in your garage, you throw some drying agent on it, and then you dispose of it like you would the chemical, like if you had oil or something like that. But the last place we want it to go is down the drain. Even though it goes to wastewater treatment, and it would be treated, it's, you know, that's not our goal, so.
Okay, is there, is there any chemical that you'd have to report to anybody else? I mean, something that was in the, in the, in there that spilled, not, not paint or oil, but I mean, something else, is there, is there something that?
We've never had anything in all the years I've owned it, but if, you know, the, the, our biggest concern is more things like asbestos that we really watch for because once airborne, then it causes a problem for our employees, for our drivers. So really, you know, the biggest thing on liquid, what we would have is if somebody say puts a lawnmower or something in a dumpster, and it has fuel and oil still in it. So we check those, but we, we, as a dumpster company, are policed by the, the state DNR. So, you know, that's a regular, and they, they take care of all of the solid waste as far as the transfer stations and all that as well. But as far as, as running into a chemical that we, you know, if, if we came across something that, that, you know, we weren't sure of, yes, we would report it.
Okay, and, and liquids, you don't, you don't deal, deal with liquids as all, at all?
No, we don't let, we don't allow any liquids in the dumpsters.
Okay, thank you. Just one of the things that there's mention in, in the things, it's adequately screened, the facility, this might be one better for Jack, but the facility adequately screened. So what, what is, what does adequately screened mean? And also, Jack, I guess on, on the side of your dumpsters, that they're, that once you have some sort, dumpster sorted, that they're stored on property?
No waste will ever spend the night there as far as like C and D. Because currently, we can't have, like, say, you know, you have a dumpster with me, and you say, hey, David, you need to get over here and pick this dumpster up. It's 7:00 at night, you guys didn't get it. If, if we do that, we have to dump it that night. If not, we would have to leave it on the truck, tarped, and pull it inside the building.
Okay.
It cannot be dumped, and we can't have any dumpster on the lot that has anything. They have to be completely empty. And DNR does police that heavily.
Okay.
As far as that, that side of it.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess probably the, the, another question, where are the materials coming from? I know you mentioned Meta, right? That's a big one. And, and Smithville, is it, is it just around the metro?
We, you know, really, our bread and butter is Gladstone North. We cover Carney, Platte City, Smithville, Holt. Really, all the small towns that like Waste Management doesn't go to is kind of our bread and butter. We do go downtown Kansas City, but anything that's not like a, like on a job site that, that would have the sorting would go to one of those transfer stations down there. Because there's actually seven of them within like three miles of each other in the city limit of Kansas City from downtown. And we, so really, to be, to, to be a profitable company, when our computers route the trucks, so if we pick a dumpster up in, in Overland Park, we're going to go to the transfer station that's closest to it, which would be like Grandview. So we go to those. It's just the, you know, Meta is one of those. We do a lot of things at, at Rosecrans. They require the dumpsters to be sorted as well. But all of our dumpsters that would say if they did a deck at your house or something like that, that would come back here, and, and we would recycle that lumber. But if it's just, you know, someone cleaning out their home with clothes and trash and that sort of stuff, it, that would go actually to the landfill. So we just, and on the screening, we would have the, the required fencing in the industrial park that they already require there. And then we have a landscaping plan as well. But if you look at the building from the outside, it, it won't be like the ones in the city because they are open to the, to the public, and they're open to every dumpster and trash company. This will just be our trucks. So when we pull in to dump, the doors are closed, and it would look just like any other building. So those are so hectic, and, you know, the amount of trucks and stuff that go in and out, it, that, that's a whole different licensing category that we won't be licensed for. So we're just, want to do our own stuff.
Thank you. Another thing too, I guess it's probably for Jack about, about two things, I guess, that the, it's right on the line of the city limit, right? And so who, whose property is that right adjacent to that? Okay.
Fairview Enterprises to the south and to the west. They were at the Planning Commission meeting, and I cannot remember their name. They here by chance, the people west of the site? I don't see him. No. I can't, I don't recall their name. They were at the Planning Commission with some questions.
Okay.
To clarify your screening question, this is the zoning request. A site plan review has to be separately submitted and go through the Planning Commission, which is where the fencing and landscaping and all that occurs.
And we'll see, we'll see that. And the difference between I two and I one, I know that we did a conditional permit, or we're doing a conditional permit for this. And, and there was, I, it was just, I didn't quite understand, it said that to protect the values around the, I didn't understand what that was.
This transfer station is allowed in two circumstances in the city. One, if it's light industrial, they have to have a conditional use permit, or it can be on heavy industrial. If this was changed to heavy industrial, the I two, they could sell the property to anyone in the future, and any use that's in the I two district would be able to go there. So the hope was to be able to isolate the, the risk.
Okay, so the conditional use is just, just for, okay, it doesn't, it doesn't go with the.
And it's for a transfer station.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have for that. Thank you. I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
Any other questions? Hartman?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Are you know other questions or discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Neilatol.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Smithville, Missouri by and granting a conditional use permit to Huntley Disposable for transfer station for construction and demolition waste at 14820 North Industrial Drive.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Neilatol.
Motion to approve Resolution 1244 Renewing the City Toll Contract.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor. Yes. Yeah, so I would actually like to move to lay the question on the table. And the thought behind that is I'd like for this to go out to bid. I know it's been two years, but I would like to see this go out to bid. So I'm formally making a motion to lay the question on the table.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, didn't hurt to look into it.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion is to table the item to allow staff to put on a work session at later date? Okay? Voice vote? Okay, are all, all those in favor of tabling the discussions or tabling Resolution 1244, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
Four two? Thank. We'll table this and come back to you later date. Next item on the agenda is number 10. Alderman Neilatol.
Motion to approve Resolution 1245 Encroachment Agreements with Evergy Metro and Evergy Missouri West.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? It's a very thick packet, by the way. Anybody wants to read it? All right. Here are no discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution 1245, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 11. Alderman Neilatol.
Motion to approve Resolution 1246. Motion to approve resolution twelve forty-six, purchase of utility meters.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution twelve forty-six, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries, next item on the agenda is number twelve. Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve resolution twelve forty-seven, single phase. Final plat. First part, third plat.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving resolution twelve forty-seven, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say no? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number thirteen. Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve resolution twelve forty-eight, site plan, Smithville self-storage.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution twelve forty-eight, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say no? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number fourteen, Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve resolution twelve forty-nine, site plan, Smithville School Transportation Facility.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, and there are a couple of school district representatives, anybody has questions? Hearing none, all those in favor approving resolution twelve forty-nine, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, for all those that have the updated agenda, is number fifteen, resolution twelve fifty, Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve resolution twelve fifty, change order number two, fourth street terrace.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question here, mayor, that I didn't quite understand, so uh say what's a change order? If we didn't do it, it was gonna cost us nine thousand dollars, but right now it's gonna cost us forty-nine, whatever it was, thousand dollars.
So, what we came across was, we're rebuilding the street on fourth street terrace. As we ran the water line up, we had to cross all the sewer services. And a lot of, because of the slope or I guess the grade, fourth street terrace from Spellman goes up and flattens out. And when they went up the hill, they didn't keep the sewer line deep enough, so when people sewer services are coming out, they're having to run down the hill. And tie into the main, so we have these extra long service lines that are gonna be underneath our new road and we already know we have to replace three of them. Excuse me, because they're orange burg and we don't want to replace those. And have these lines that run all the way down the hill, um under our street and they're old. So if we start repairing them, we're gonna basically be spending more money to replace all these service lines. And they can't tie in unless we relay that main at a deeper grade, so that will come out straight from the homes, right straight to our main. And only be under the road a short section, just perpendicular to our road, so um what we had planned. As we would, we weren't necessarily planning on redoing sewer main, um we were going to go ahead and slip line it. That's the nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we're foregoing the nine thousand dollars that we would do next year, because we're gonna slip line it anyway. But the way these service lines are laid out and stuff, it's in our best interest to do this now, we don't want to have a road put in there. And then find out, oh, I gotta take out my sewer or I gotta fix my sewer and they tear up half the road because they can't get great to get down to tie into the main.
Okay, so we're we're replacing it instead of slip line it, right? Mm-hmm, okay, and that, is there any other thing that you foresee that we're gonna need to do a change order on, this is? Okay.
So for, so for those of you not familiar with the orange burg, um it's uh paper and tar.
Yes, it's like uh the felt paper that you have, that people put on roofs, that felt paper, take that roll, stick it end to end. Orange burg.
So when you get compaction, it squishes and it turns into.
And they're, and they're in bad shape, we've cambered them all and they're in bad shape, so.
So for the property owners, this will shorten their service line, they'll have less responsibility because it's not going all the way down the hill too. So if somebody's sewer line does break, it's closer and it's new pipe.
You know, we'll put clean outs in so they can access them and um this will be all new, so it'll last many years, but you know, we're replacing the water. Now we're replacing the sewer, new storm sewer, new road, I can't think of anything else.
There's not a lot of big trees there, so we don't have to worry about.
We took the trees out.
It's a very short road. I hope you don't find anything else.
Bye Chuck, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? That's public works math, by the way, nine thousand or forty-nine thousand. It's always, it's always a fun math problem with Chuck. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor approving resolution twelve fifty, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries, next item on the agenda is public comment, we have just two, versus Ally McLean. Please state your name for the record and address, you have three minutes.
Good evening and thank you for your time, my name is Ally McLean, I live at one thousand four Coneflower Street, right here in Smithville, Missouri. Smithville, Missouri has a wonderful history, look at Dr. Archie Spellman, Dr. Archie Spellman inspired his neighbors to invest in a dream. Dr. Spellman dreamed of building a sorely needed hospital north of the Missouri River for residents of Clay, Platt. And Clinton Counties who could not afford to get medical services, excuse me. The Great Depression still gripped the land, but people trusted Dr. Spellman's reputation as a fine physician and a surgeon and responded to his appeal. Within weeks, eleven thousand dollars was raised to build a hospital right here in Smithville, Missouri. Over the years, the hospital grew in size, sustained by that original spirit of philanthropy. In nineteen six, I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-two, all philanthropic efforts on behalf of the hospital were consolidated into the Spellman Medical Foundation. In essence, if you go ahead with this TIF, you will be erasing the history of a building and a great man by approving it. What is it doing for the residents of Clay, Platt and Clinton Counties, nothing, actually, other than lining the pockets of a few by approving a residential TIF. Build something that honors a great man, honors our history, not apartments for a few and an anchor restaurant that will only compete with other restaurants. We already have right here in Smithville. Residential tips are not economic development, you as aldermen know it, the mayor knows it and the county commissioner knows it. Do the right thing and vote the TIF down. Your constituents want and expect you to do the right thing, your conscience is telling you or should be telling you what right is. So turn the TIF down, the TIF is not for the greater good, like Dr. Spellman envisioned. We all know that, it's time to put the people before the money and preserve the history of Smithville, thank you.
Carol Dawkins.
I'm Carol Dawkins and um I wanna. Address?
Yep.
Okay. PL Box nine seven two, Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you.
Um I wanna talk about, is it fair to have twenty-five years of no taxes? When building, it is built, the fire department will need a bigger truck to take care of a four-story building. So with, wouldn't it be better to have a little more taxes put in rather than nothing? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, anybody have any new business items?
I do, mayor.
Yep.
Um during our finance committee meeting, I was looking at the list of items that was over seventy-five hundred. Uh and wondering as far as the city administrator spending authority due to the rising cost of a lot of items now. That uh we maybe have the finance director look at what other cities have as far as their. Uh city administrator spending authority and bring that to us and consider raising the amount from seventy-five hundred to a higher amount, whether that's ten thousand. Twelve thousand five hundred or something that might be more in line with what stuff costs now without. I just want to consider that, thank you.
I second that, okay.
Any other new business? So I I have one item, um it's not, it's for a fall ball, I'd like to have staff look at our current website platform. And look at something that's more substantial substantial to our growing community, uh we need to have a better customer management system. We need to have some integration with some of our apps, um so we can do online permitting and a lot more than we can do today. So. We can get that into a fall work session, appreciate it. It's gotten a lot better, but we're missing some modules we need.
Second that.
Any new business, other new business? Alright, sounds like we're gonna have a meeting on the uh first of August as well, um I will be remote for that, I think everybody else will be here. And then I know in the middle of August meeting, you have some vacation, Alderman Atkins, you have some vacation, so we'll uh. Maybe you have some people on Zoom there too, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no? We stand adjourned.